Okay, welcome folks to our May 11, 2020, remote slash virtual Village Reddick Board Meeting. It's seven o'clock and we've had this as our second remote meeting. We did one the past month and we're working through some of the technical tricks and kinks, but we'll get better at it. So bear with us. We have on our door notes and in our website and so forth, what's in a URL addresses to publicize that this meeting is being held in line with executive orders from the governor of the state of New York. It's notice has been made to the media and to the public via our website and door notices and our board members here. I thought we would do a quick roll call. I see it looks like four board members present and our clerk treasurer and our treasurer, deputy treasurer. I don't know if there's any members from the public on last time I looked participants, but we'll talk about that in a minute, but I'll sign in. Ahmed Blondal, I'm the mayor and Jay Trap, I believe you're here, is that true?
Yes, sir.
And then I saw Brett Kowalczek.
Yep.
And I saw Jennifer Norris.
Yeah.
Last time Charlie came in a little late. I'm looking up to a wall clock over here. Charlie, are you onboard yet? Sounds like a no. And then Cynthia Schreler, are you out there? I think she, we know, I asked that question, but she's having an audio problem, but we do know she's online from text messages. And Chris, do you show her as a participant on yours?
Yeah, she's still a participant in here. Yeah.
And Chris, those are the names of our board and our official members of our working group administration. Do you see any member of the public on there right now?
Oh, he's blocking us.
Good. Thank you for reminding me. It's funny, plus I've got the screen that's just showing my photo. My video rather, and I'm not seeing your other images. Sorry about that, Jonah, but thank you. But we
If you go in the upper right hand corner, there's a choice speaker view or gallery view. I think if you click on gallery view, you'll see everybody.
It's funny, it's not a
No? I don't know.
Hunting around.
Upper right hand corner.
I can get a Tech Man.
It's, are you only seeing a little box in your screen? So?
Yeah, no. Yeah, I'm seeing my image. And if I click one with four boxes, I can get a me and Jennifer and Jay and Brent, and then I can click the down arrow, I get Jonah, Ray and Chris Donnie. But I can't seem to
You don't see like the full screen of everybody. If you go on that, there's in like the bottom right, I believe you can open that up if you see that.
I'll keep going. I'll keep playing as we get into reports when they're talking, I can try. Normally we open our meetings with a pledge, but last month in this, we thought we'd do something different since we're all in remote locations. We're not in the same room and the public's not here with us. So we just do something meaningful and two levels. We do know here in the village, we're looking at data dashboards from the county and at the industry from COVID-19. Normally when we know of the passing of village resident, we name them and put aside a piece of our minutes in their honor and out of respect. I do know one person, but I think with HIPAA and certain confidentiality's, we'd rather not do that today, but we are aware of village residents ill and one unfortunately did pass away within the past week or so. And we like to just give them a quiet moment and at the same time, a quiet moment to thank both our staff and the essential work they're doing for us, the first responders in our staff and around us, and of course, the medical workers. So maybe we just do a 15 second contemplation moment. Thank you. So we'll open the meeting and we did circulate minutes for the last meeting was April 16th, held on Ring Central.
And if I can interrupt, Charlie just got on. I know you can't see who's on, but Charlie's on. Hello, Charlie.
So well, that April 16th meeting was also held remotely on the Ring Central medium. And we circulated the minutes. The clerk did take minutes. We do have a recorded version if people want or need that and we can make an actual transcript if we need that.
Oh, raised there.
But we did circulate them. I reviewed them. They're dated April 16th. And I was wondering if the rest of the board had any other additions, alterations or corrections?
None here.
No.
One thing we did learn at class meeting, we need to do roll call just so we are sure we heard everybody. So I didn't hear any edits, additions or corrections. So I would move that we accept the April 16th minutes as circulated. Is there a second?
Second.
And is that, whose voice was that?
That was me.
Well checked. And then I'll call a vote. I'm in favor. Norris.
Hi.
Lang, you there?
Yes.
Trap?
Yes.
And Kowalczek, we heard your vote, but okay. I think we have everybody. Cindy, I hope you got that. Thank you, people. We move then to the Treasury's report. I'll read it out as is my custom. We're this report we're looking at that I'm looking at is dated May 11th, 2020. So we have about days left in the fiscal year. Looking over, I'll read these out for the record. General Fund $471,224 is account balance. Water Fund $52,343. Trusted Agency $18,436. Petty Cash $71. Villas Green $4,149. Hard Scrabble $4,243. Health Insurance $9,321. Sewer Fund $30,260. Then we have this new heading Reserve Checking Balances. Fire Department $5,022. Police $14,553. USDA Short Term Asset Fund $110,512. Highway $2,740. Snow Reserve $3,231. Tower Reserve $17,702. Unemployment Reserve $4,528. Port Reserve $3,283. And Office Reserve $58. In the voucher packs, we have General Fund, Water Fund, Trust and Agency and Sewer. This month, there's only activity in three of those four funds. Monthly expenses are in General Fund $93,311.25. Water Fund, the monthly expenses were $88,438.67. Trust and Agency monthly expenses were $18,436.91. There was no activity in the sewer fund. What is in the Water Fund, where we do some fund transfers. They were in there, which by design and within our budgeting parameters, that's something we do. We allow for that and that happened in this month. So it wasn't like we had an exceedingly high expense. Good note is that I went through the vouchers that some of the expenses were for what could be categorized short-term assets. So the financial people will move some of those from expense lines in the general in the water budget to transact some funds out from the USDA Short Term Reserve. And we have existing authority to do that from prior situations. You all might recall that we put $25,000 a year into USDA Short Term Asset Reserve Fund. And part of it is designed to repair, replace failed short-term assets. So we have to go through a few convoluted steps, but that money for that reason. With all that being read and said, wish we could hear Cindy a little bit, but the fund balance looks pretty good there, meaning the remaining account balance in General Fund for this time of year. I know we do have two things there that are showing us credits. We did it again by design and purpose. We did that on the CHIPS money, which is coming in in June. We have that in the line of equity money credit. And we still have the, the Disney Fund has been reimbursed to us for the parking, parking lot work we did. But um those, that's about 100,000 between those two things. So the balance is more like 371 because those, once we get reimbursed by CHIPS, move that money out. My point is it's a little higher by by certain steps we took to keep our cash flow pretty well established toward the end of the year here. I hear my phone tweaking. Let me see if it's our treasurer trying to tell me something as we're in this area. Yeah, she's just reinforcing some of that water bill, some of the bills that are in the Water Fund are actually going to be transferred to the USDA Short Term Reserve. I could hear my text ringing me here. Okay, cool. I did go through the attached details for a quick perusal, but you should hold that again. But getting really near the end of our year and looks like things are looking, okay now, but we'll touch on aspects of that later in the part of the meeting. I would therefore ask for a motion to approve the Treasury's report as presented. And I'll do, anybody voting no might be a way to get around a long vote on this. Be good. All favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? I hear none. So we've accepted her report. The other part is kind of interesting while I'm still on Police Report. We have in our packets, the April report. And the incident number looks a little higher than normal, but if one looks further down, the UTT's uniform traffic tickets are very low. I'll explain that in a minute, but at first I thought it was something wrong, but I talked to an officer today, one was prepping up for the meeting. Incidents, the total is 426. That breaks down 314 in the village, 108 in the town, 4 in Tivoli. Five in the village and one in the town of Red Hook. The rest were three and those all look to be in the village of Red Hook, none in the town. But what's happening is with the COVID-19 and certain precautions and so forth, law enforcement in general is only ticketing extreme cases of situations where you know, we're not really looking into window to window walk-ups and you know, face to window walk-ups and so forth. So that number is much different from prior months, but in a way it's what we have to do now. Even with that being said, we had another incident where an arrested party
Ed, Ed, Ed?
Yeah.
I can't hear that. Could you wait until after my report with all due respect? Because of my Atlanta front me, I will, if I may add one thing though. In one of the, I've been on the Zoom conference calls with the court hierarchy twice a week. Traffic is way down too. I mean, everyone is staying in place or working from home and they're not on the street. They're not running red lights. They're not, therefore not speeding, et cetera. So that's another reason that there's fewer stops.
Good point.
I can't hear anything about
Okay.
specific arrest.
So they're not doing their civic duty by speeding right now?
That's one way of looking at it, Jay.
Let's see, I'm poking around. Alright, so that's the police report. Jay mentioned he didn't get in his packet, the planning and zoning building department reports. I have them right here in front of me, so I might as well do them. I have them. For the month of April, there were three building permits issued. CVOs, none were issued. One certificate of compliance with three municipal searches. Orders to remedy, none. Stop work, none. Court appearances, none. And no fire inspections and notices are due to COVID-19. There's some complaints, one, two, three, four. Three of those were remedied, excuse me, two of those were remedied and two are pending. No inspections in April due to COVID-19. Planning board actions, none in April and no EBA meetings in April. As far as pre-existing inspections and revenue with transaction money to us, it looks like $2,126.13 was garnered in that department. So that's that. If we could, Charlie, we hear you're out there. Are you there, Charlie?
I am still here.
Good, good. If you wouldn't mind giving the water report and we could talk about it a little bit. I'm gonna hunt around on my screens and see how I can get more of an idea who's on this thing with me. Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
Okay. Well, during the month of April, the water treatment facility treated 7,8800 total gallons, which is an average of 233,600 gallons a day. I mean, that's been trending quite high for, for a few months. It's right in line with where we were last year by the looks of it. We also sent three samples out for testing to the Smith Environmental Labs in Hyde Park and they all came back absent for colorful mannequins. That's all good. And during the month of April, the water treatment plant used 71 gallons of sodium hyperchloride. So that's an average daily use of 2.37 gallons per day. So that's the standard monthly report. I don't know if you've heard anything more on the possible replacement of the meter or what's going on there with our sort of slightly higher than expected uses?
Well, yes and no. What I was curious about on the big picture is interesting, interesting to see the numbers. I was wondering with everybody being home, but certain businesses being closed, what would it do to our production consumption issues? You know, it looks pretty much the same as it, like Charlie said, it's pretty much in that standard range of production off the wells that we've seen before COVID-19 changes in lifestyle. And if you look at the second page with the actual daily count that they pulled to make that average, there's they seem to be about around the same with a couple of days, folks, I see are a little lighter, but I have a feeling that's that something we ran into if it's a little more than a 24 hour gauge inspection cycle. I think you see lighter day than a heavier day.
Yeah. I, I think it's reasonable to see that, I mean, the sort of reductions in consumption from the businesses being shut are offset by the increases from increased residential use. I mean, that's not surprising. I mean, on, in a bigger picture, the city of New York has actually seen quite a significant drop in consumption. But that's because the residential uptick is not able to offset the decrease in business use.
Yeah, because I had circulated, I think to everybody, an article about the village of New Paltz, they're bigger than us by two and they have a college and certain things. They're actually looking at shortfalls in revenue because the water consumption is so down and it's to their sewer building too. So it's, it's, ours looks like in our head that 240, 240,000 gallons per day is right, we've been dancing around again and doesn't seem to have changed. Okay, thank you, Charlie. On your question, gauges and so forth, we have had them working on that. I haven't heard that it's in. They also did some work. They're going to be, we have it in the regular agenda part of the night, but I'm looking at some flushing and trying to get that set up with our people and so forth. They've also been working with Tradition slash Hoffman Farms. They've taken their first residential occupant. So it's converted over to, that's just kind of water, wastewater now. But the, their, our water guys working on it just to get some recycle some water through there, meaning it's set in its own web of pipes down there. So we wanted to, I wouldn't call it flushing. Yeah, they got some motion, some action. Then when the construction gets going again, they'll be using water again as well for construction irrigation. So they won't have that same issue. But they are working on those things, Charlie. And
Good, good.
We have in the regular business too, I put a line for sewer review and I put a note to myself, water review here too, because we'll be looking at another weird grant and a few things for other things we want to work on. But that's that one. I do see a, one of our residents, David Pearson's there too. Maybe if I could hold for a minute, if Tech Man, Chris, I'm not sure. I still just see a strip of, you know, two inch by inch and a half video images of folks. And it looks like it's precluding, precluding, precluding me from getting to where I'd want to do a screenshot if I wanted to. The only icons I can see, Chris, is like a negative sign, a rectangle and four rectangles and a bigger rectangle. When I click the bigger one, it makes me maybe five inches by three inches. And
Screen and click on the Ring Central Meetings icon, it should also bring it up that way. If you don't see like the, if there's like a green button, I think to bring it back in that box.
You don't see anything like I'm used to seeing. I could drag my image around. I have a background screen that says piss, want to, want to see a whole new way of doing online meetings, visit Ring Central's behind my image, but see what you're talking about.
Max screen?
Funny.
Are you like, is it in full screen?
The Ring Central screen is, yeah.
Okay, maybe. So if you go to the top and get that out of full screen and then you can go to the bottom of your screen and press Ring Central Meetings?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm ready to do that. I'm afraid I'm gonna cancel my, I only have, I don't have any minimize option. I just have Ring Central meeting account with an X, which I think might knock me out of the whole meetings. I would read that as, I can keep going. Alright, so let me just mark off what we did here. Jen, you want to go with your aspect reports? Jennifer, you were there?
She's muted.
Am I muted?
There you go.
Okay, I'm good?
Yep, we're here now.
Alright, for the month of April, we sold $4,011 in garbage tags and paid out $794.66. We had 7.33 tons of garbage and 2.89 tons of recycling, which breaks down as follows. 1.41 tons of commingled, 1.04 tons of newspaper and 0.44 tons of cardboard. Garbage tags will continue to be sold during this time. Please mail a check to the village hall and we will mail the garbage tags back to you to avoid physical contact. If you do this system by mailing a check, for every 10 tags you buy, we will give you two free. If you do the transaction in the office, you will only get one tag for every 10 purchased. This is our annual spring cleaning sale, which we do April, May and June. So that is that. I'm going to have water and read a long statement. Sad statement from the hard scrabble committee. For many years, the village of Red Hook and its wonderful sponsors helped bring life and energy to our village with the annual hard scrabble day festival. A key goal of our committee continues to be to provide you with free world-class music and other entertainment to attract folks to Red Hook and its businesses. It is all about celebrating our wonderful community with a full day of music, children's events, vendors and a themed parade. The hard scrabble day planning committee has decided to postpone hard scrabble day 2020. It would not be prudent for us to sign large band contracts or other entertainment contracts in the face of uncertainty and social distancing requirements of the COVID-19 pandemic. Right now with the economy in peril, we must support each other and our businesses, but a large community celebration is not the way to go. Health and safety rules will be in place for the foreseeable future and it does not seem with the new restrictions that a street festival can happen. Additionally, the committee feels that engaging in the fundraising efforts necessary to put on hard scrabble day at this time is not feasible. We all thought that we should concentrate our local community resources. That we should concentrate our local community resources. An organization such as Red Hook Responds, a volunteer organization that assists with grocery shopping, meal deliveries, medication pickups and deliveries and friendly check-ins for those who need it. We do intend to bring back hard scrabble day to September 2021. In the interim, we will look for opportunities to hold an alternative celebration, such as a Red Hook Block Party if things change later in the year. Please help us highlight from past hard scrabble days, photos of local vendors and musicians for our Facebook page and our website. If you would like your information to be shared, please email info@redhookvillage.org with attention to the hard scrabble committee. With your help, we can create a virtual hard scrabble day and celebrate the energy and community our festival has had for over 40 years. We want to thank the many sponsors and contributors for prior hard scrabble days and look forward to September 2021 and our famous but not forgotten community celebration. Stay safe and please remember to eat and shop local.
Thank you, Jen. That's the most we heard Jen read and
I don't think I've talked that much in any meeting some
Yeah, really. But yeah, like you mentioned, the last meeting, it just didn't seem possible. And we'll talk more about reentry, reopening and phases one through four and sequencing just doesn't seem to work for a large social gathering at this point in time, especially since it takes a lot of pre-planning and a lot of fundraising and that money could be served better ways right now. But on the other
I'm sorry, have you heard anything from the VFW about a Memorial Day celebration? I know that a parade can't happen, but at some point you and I had said that maybe they were going to do a very scaled down event. I didn't know if you had any update on that.
Yeah, I think we chatted a little bit about it, but the update, the current status is that Memorial Day is early this year, a little early, May 25. And the concurrent, the consensus seems to be there will be no actual parade or large memorial ceremony up at the park. They would like to, and this would be fine. The members, the color guard type, the real hardcore central group there would want to do socially distanced, some sort of memorial without all of the other things, the big crowd or the big parade. And because as everybody knows, Memorial Day is centered on honoring the troops. But it's also a kickoff to summer and bring back parade and the event is hugely attended and also very meaningful. And it is shoulder to shoulder, folks at the park and in the parade and on the sidewalk. So it just can't happen this year. The VFW understands that and they're working with us to, to make something meaningful, but smaller this year. So we do stay in touch with them and that's the latest I've heard Jen and to the public too. That's what we envisioned. It's really only what 14 days, it's 25, I'm looking at a wall calendar here. It's a Monday, two weeks from today. So they'll be working on that. To go back to Jen's numbers, it's pretty amazing. If you're listening and I don't know if you have the report in front of you, but this month, the tag sales were $4,011 and I was checking with the staff. Looks like Max Aguey did buy a big chunk. They, they buy them upfront, cash upfront and then sell them over a course of time.
Max or Taste Buds?
Uh, Max. And then Taste Buds has been selling a lot. But I'm looking here, I think Jen had an average. Well, I saw an average on this page, revenue tags sold, yeah. 768, call it 2,800 bucks. She's tracking, I was doing some trending that trends off to like $33,250 for a year. We did budget 39 in the current fiscal year. And we reduced that budget for next year's tag sales, but kind of interesting that if perked up there, we'll see what May brings, but she might close the gap a little more there to get closer to budget. I don't know if there'll be another 4,000. It could be like, you get a big month or a big day in a lower month, prior month. I don't know if there'll be another 4,000. It could be like, well, you get a big month or a big day and a lower month, prior month. But thanks, Jen. You got that all in there? Anything else from you, Jen? Yeah, let's see. We could head for the deputy mayor's sequence reports. I thought if we could, Brent, just concentrate. On sewer and things that you think are high, high level for us now. In case we lose connections or something, we'd rather head to the regular business meeting. So it's for yours, Brent.
I'll start with the village green committee. I'll go through the budgets. There were no committee meetings held during the month of April. And the annual spring planting and Arbor Day celebrations have been canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Village Green Committee is respecting all county, state, federal orders, are your social distancing and central service requirements. So hopefully we'll be up and running in the spring and we'll have a big list of people planted. And the highway department, highway department's currently picking up leaves and brush every first and third Mondays of the month. As their schedule and weather permits. And we're looking at purchasing a new truck for them as well. And that's in the next fiscal year. And we did receive a check of $477.60. Scrap metal and it brings a grand total fiscal year up to $2,794.65, which is beyond what we had predicted. The Red Hook Task Force and the infrastructure, I'll start with the task force. There were no meetings held. This month at all for the task force, the meetings for the sewers, sewer project. Were held via telephone conferencing calls. We had meetings on April 3rd, 10th, 17th, 22nd, 24th and 27th. And we were responding to comments made by the New York State DEC public comment period regarding the transfer of the speedage permit. From Red Hook Common Sewer Works Corporation to the Village of Red Hook. Set up responses via email from the village to the DEC on April 1st. And actually we did hear back and we did get a speedies permit. In May, so this beginning of May, so we're we're up and running. We cleared that hurdle. And we also reviewed the status and negotiations between two property owners regarding offers to resolve permanent and temporary easements. Offers were made by the village attending to the property owner's attorneys and responses from the property owner's attorneys are forthcoming. We also reviewed comments regarding work permits for the New York State DOT regarding directional drilling and possible open cutting. And reviewed, we reviewed and discussed the USDA rural development terms, conditions and exceptions to finalize the letter conditions. We did have a conference call with the, the acting director of USDA New York. On April 17th. And we did have a conference call also with Ken Carney and the Carney Realty Group with his engineer and attorney. To finalize the donation agreement. For the Village of Red Hook to accept the Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plant and adjoining lands from the Red Hook Common Sewer Works Corporation. So we're best in process right now and hopefully that'll be resolved shortly. There was no work done on the Route 9 old farm road. Water loop main project. Ed will be talking about the distribution system and the services for the water. And I said the task force did not meet at all. On other committees, very few meetings were held. We did have one on the. Advisory Board. And the advisory board did recommend to the town board that they use community preservation fund. Monies to purchase the development rights of the Moser Farm located on the southern edge of the town along Route 9. The CPF in the town will contribute 25%. Partnership for Manageable Growth will will contribute 50%, Seneca Hudson contribute the other 25%. And Duchess County Land Conservancy, which will. Administer the the easement, put up some money for the. Development rights and purchase and conservation easements. Part of that property is in 13 acres, actually in the town of Reinbeck. And Reinbeck will contribute 59,000 for the purchase of the development rights. So a total of. Quite a bit of money for that, but it went through and it's up to the town board to okay it. The current balance of the CPF fund as of April 30th is $1,384,370.75. So I feel watershed community, no, no. Yes, sir.
Did that current balance exclude the monies that will be expended on the Moser property?
No, because it hasn't passed yet to the town board.
Okay. Thanks.
So I said that it'll be deducted from that.
Yeah.
Socka Watershed has no meetings, but they do have a newsletter and they could be accessed on Facebook or. Instagram or they do have a website. So you could read there. They were doing once a week and now they're every two weeks. So they're on issue number five. They have some interesting articles. And no meetings at the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group or the Know the Duchess Alliance or the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Talk more a little bit on sewer and things with regular business as well. I know. We've. Tree boss are on the line here and. I think he sent us some information and offered to join in our meeting. So I thought he's welcome to stay on, but we could move. Regular business, but put him first if he wanted to go and the board could listen in here, but I know. You want to give us an update on your news and court world, Jonah and.
Right, thanks, Ed. For for several weeks, maybe even a month, I've been on. Twice looking phone calls to the hierarchy of the Office of Court Administration. And at each of these phone calls, I have made a pitch to reopen. Our office for backroom work. They didn't want any contact with the public, just as very soundly. The mayor and the board closed Village Hall to keep our employees safe and do everything by mail or by stuffing stuff in the slot. Same thing at Town Hall. We wanted to do the same thing. Let us have our people go in, go through the mail, deposit the checks, do the filing, et cetera. Well, finally, on May 6th, the Honorable Vito Caruso, who's a Deputy Chief Administrative Judge. Did issue such an order, which allows my clerks one at a time to be in the office. To. Open the mail, deposit the checks, get the database up to date, do a lot of that old filing that's been hanging around. What I have to get clarification on is whether we can decide new tickets that are coming out. I think we can, but the immediate supervisory people said they wanted to check with the administrative judge and get his blessing. And whether we can do monthly reports, which involve not only reporting what's just happened throughout the month, but providing the village treasurer with our monthly check. Right now, we are two months behind in the monthly report world. Because we were closed, the controller to state of New York has turned a blind eye to that because normally if we don't have it. And within 10 days, on the 11th day, you're getting exceedingly nasty email. So he's turning a blind eye until such times and everything is up and running, but we could certainly do those monthly reports. Again, we're just waiting for those two items to be approved by Judge Caruso. As far as costs are concerned, Ed mentioned that we're not obviously using court officers, we're not holding court. Normally, the village sends me for training every year in September. It's extremely unlikely that that training will be held live. It may be like this with Zoom or one of these online situations. So that cost, which usually is between $500 and $750 a year, will be saved. Same thing for the clerks. I've been told that the clerk training will be offered in this kind of format. Online because they don't think they can afford to send the state people down to the Association of Towns in New York City. They know they send down 20 or 30 trainers and they have to put them up in a Marriott marquee for two nights. And, you know, feed them and pay for their train tickets. All that is a very big expense. And the state, of course, is is having a tremendous deficit of his own. So I would presume that a lot of these costs, which are already in my budget, will not be spent. The next step that I'm pushing for with the administrative judge is allow us to have our criminal calendar online. Where it would look very much like this with the defense attorney in one box, the prosecutor in another box, defendant in another box and handle the cases that way. Traffic court, we're making a proposal that traffic court be done by mail, that we would scan and send to our traffic prosecutor. Christopher Montalto, they're not guilty pleas. He would then reach out to the defendants, negotiate on the side, outside of my presence by mail. And if they come to an agreement on a plea to have that reduced to writing and signed. And Mr. Montalto would then present it to the court for me to decide if I accept the plea and what, and to levy what fine, if any, is appropriate. This, of course, would mean no personal contact and we could move things along that way. The one thing I think that would be practically impossible to do is a jury trial in this modality. We necessarily do a bench trial, like a small claims proceeding again. The claimant in one box, defendant in another box, me in the third box. Bench trials, you know, is trial by me alone, which could be done like this, but not a jury trial. That'd be tough. But all these are proposals. They haven't been approved yet and I'll keep pushing it. Be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
We're going back and forth today with news and circulating it, looking for the implications of planning. What we'll be doing next fiscal year. So it sounds like court officer and travel training go away, but. With Montalto, it's really not John's world. Jonah is the court, Montalto is the prosecution. Maybe Jonah, you might have some guidance. It seemed like it'd be more hours of his time if it's by mail and then.
Right, and postage.
So it's be, I assume there'd be some more expense outside. We were originally thinking of doing two court sessions starting last, you know, two months ago, probably.
Right.
That can't happen. Now if it goes to a male version or some remote slash male version. Would court just be happening all the time? How would you envision, in other words, if you know?
Well, for example, if someone pleads guilty, they get a ticket and they send it and plead guilty. I have been coming into the office before the lockdown. Two or three times a week and it's left on my desk and I decide the case. I make an notation what the fine would be and I give it to my clerk and they sent out the fine notice. It would be the same situation. They would. He would scan it, email it back to us. I would print it and then decide the fines, leave it on the desk of the clerk. To send out the fine letters. I would not, by the way, reduce the. Court officer item to zero for the coming year because. You never know, they could have the miracle vaccine and we can be up and running again in in January. All right, I'm saying for now, that expense is not going to happen and certainly it's extremely doubtful if September training. Will happen or the one in January down in New York City for the clerks. That's extremely doubtful, but we may get back. I mean, if they have a vaccine or the miracle cure, we can get back in action early next year.
Yeah, I'm just trying to predict. What we have to do, because later on we'll talk about. Overall operations across the board, not just court, you know, but. Probably balance out, because we budget a revenue line for court or court officer from the town of Red Hook. And then we include that our expenses on your, on our own village court, we don't budget a revenue line per se, a real expense. But so just envision, so. You would have had a backlog and then whatever didn't get heard for May, April and half of March, whatever. We don't see big numbers for April as far as new tickets, but somehow it would be.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that there's approximately a 200 ticket backlog in the village and 100 in the town.
Yeah.
All right, last time I looked, which was last month.
Okay.
Now Rebecca was in today for the first time and she'll be in again tomorrow and perhaps Thursday. You know, she's very efficient. She's a very dedicated worker and. She should have all the deposits done by the end of the week of what we have, you know, backlog. And then I will be there on a day that neither she or nor Kathy are there to handle whatever they leave on my desk. We're gonna try and. Not gonna try. We are going to do it where only one person is in that room at any one time.
Yeah, it's one of the things we're going back and forth on, because the board and everybody listening should know. We've followed governor's orders, we've cut her in house. Population, put people on emergency ability. And we built the work schedule where we have the fewest bodies of staffers in the building as possible. Even though we are in essential service, we still need to be compliant with the governor's orders. And we're trying to find a way to balance that. I apologize, Jonah, if you said this, I was taking some notes for a minute, but. We explored if the court could work remotely, meaning Rebecca, could she to be most safe and keep our building count down, work off site? It seems like OCA is not.
Well, here's the unusual thing and Chris, you might help us. There's something called a VPN. What is that? Do you know?
Yeah.
I honestly don't.
You know?
Yeah, acronym, it's not on the tip of my tongue, but it's a.
Virtual private network.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I use it to go into my, to work at the company.
So as I understand it, if I leave my computer on at Village Hall and we had one of these deals, I could. Pretend that laptop I'm looking at you right now would be my office computer. I would see what's on the office computer, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Problem is that at the same time, they suggest that remote access. They're saying that in the same memorandum that you can't bring home. The physical files. So. It's just, at the present time, it's not gonna work, but I'm gonna try and work on saying, hey, listen, can we please bring home, you know, go in. 15 minutes, grab the files, go home and do this VPN thing as Steve talked about and work from home. I'm working on that.
Yeah, because that's what we established for our work at home. Other folks, that, for instance, Cindy can work from home, Doris. Teresa, you know, we have it out there. So if you could, but we did find a way to fold her in and, you know, we're still. Functioning and safely play for the board. Rebecca was here. I came in, but she was. Work code, sliding window closed, mask on, working away, so. At that time of day, Greg is the only other person on that floor, so it's, we feel pretty good with that. All right, Jonah, thanks for the.
Questions. Okay, well, and I'll say good night. I know that you wanted to talk about that one arrest that I really should be listening to. Good night, all. Good to see you.
I wasn't really going to get into the nitty gritty of that arrest in any criminal or legal sense. It was more that when a person tested COVID positive. How should I phrase it? It's a different case than when we knew about two weeks ago. They worked with this person here and then eight days later she called in and said. I just learned I'm COVID positive. We had to take two officers into self-quarantine. Had them for tests. Fortunately, they both came back negative on our officers. But then we had a similar incident in highway. One of our part-time highway guys worked with somebody off the job who tested positive. So we're doing a stance of a little threatening to us. We. Either directly because of employees' work tasks or because. People are getting positive tests, but we have to then react to get them tested and do the quarantining. And we don't have that many staff members that we have the luxury of pulling some in that are off duty right now, so it's a little bit of a bouncing act. I think this is going to continue like this for a while, even though we're moving back into reopening slash reentry. Still going to be with social distancing, testing and, you know, if somebody's positive, they have to be quarantined and. We just have to protect against that within our core staff, our next layer of staff and so forth. So if you keep that in your mind as we talk about some things later tonight. What I thought we could do is, one of the things we've been working on, we touched on it last, you did, I think, and we got it perfected. In your packets, it's called resolution. I guess I might have to have Cindy text me the resolution number. If she could really, can you text me? Resolution, resolution number. We can start talking about it. I thought I heard her voice, I guess not. 13, resolution 13. There's proof she's out there, guys and ladies. It's in line with the COVID-19 pandemic. It, it's in line with the COVID-19 pandemic and things we're seeing on the street. As you know, our retail and our restaurants are core vibrant businesses here, really taking hits. And it's therefore reduced their income, which then reflects or reduces their ability to pay their landlords rent or if they own their buildings, their mortgages and different things. So we reached out originally with the conference of mayors, looking at a way can we take installment payments on our next year's property taxes? There were complications, but we've worked through it a little bit with conference of mayors, our lawyer and with county helping and right now it looks like seven villages in the county of Duchess. We'll go ahead with this. We drafted resolution, which you should have there and it was drafted by legal to cite the New York State real property tax law sections and to make it cogent and within what the county needed. And I'll explain that a little more because Ray had a little input and I'll explain, we have to stay with the resolution that was circulated to you all. Um, council drafted that to be compliant and it's the same one. I was working on. The catch is we were hoping, you know, we did a letter directly from the village to the governor's office and it's still pending, but the hard part for us is existing tax law requires that people pay by certain dates and then we turn our council or our delinquent council over to the county of Duchess who then starts actions to get the money themselves, but reimburses us around April. And I think this year we got I don't know, forty five thousand dollars plus or minus from delinquent accounts. And then that county either collects it or pursues it if they need to. So there's this timeline that exists outside of our control. The county, like I said, did agree if we would take payment up until September one, was the latest they could let us sit there at a second installment because they then have to start getting ready to do what they have to do. So all the municipalities concurred. This is the basis of what you have in your packets. Um, in a nutshell, our normal tax due date is July one. We've created a plan where people can do two installments. July one and then the second one, September one. Now, just a reconsideration, the board might have heard this before, but for the public and those online with us. Um, we're in the resolution that says looking for 50% upfront and then the second 50, but the one catch and one thing we cannot get around and I'll explain it more is the state-based real property tax law says any payments after July one, a penalty and interest are applied. So we have to consider that and I still think it's worth doing it, folks, because it can let some people stretch it out. And I know I've analyzed what our typical residential tax bill is. And penalties are not horrendous. I'll explain them in a minute, but we can't get around it unless the governor by executive order enables it. So we did a letter and so have other municipalities across the state really. But as of today, Monday, if you watch the governor midday, he did not announce any executive order to change this part of the real property tax law. So what it boiled down to, it seems to me our typical resident pays seventeen, eighteen hundred, seventeen to eighteen hundred dollars per year and there was tax. Um, so that person could pay eight fifty if, if using seventeen hundred, eight fifty upfront. And that next piece would be subject to, and I repeat this again, it's nothing worse, certainer can control. It's a five percent and then a one percent per month. So the worst case would be seven percent on a eight hundred fifty dollars. So it's about fifty six, sixty dollar range. If you take that option, you still can pay July one deadline and no penalty, no nothing. And you might remember last month, we had asked the treasurer about what percentage and it's a non-scientific count, but there's an escrow piece of our revenue, meaning that people pay it all year into their mortgage bank and they're getting a slight, you know, per month lesser expense accumulated up and the bank just gives us the check. So this will not apply to banks for escrow payments. And Cindy, and they thought that's about 50% of our cash flow or, or, or tax revenue. And that's important for two reasons because we, we need, we're trying to find a number where we still get enough cash flow in in the part of the year when we need it and then also give our people a break. And I think we're also trying to set the stage. Certain landlords are giving tenants a little bit of a break on rent due amounts and percentages and so forth. So we thought it would help all our people, our residents and our landlords, meaning our building owners, whether it's um, your residential tenants, whatever, everybody needs a little break right now. It doesn't make it go away. But I want to re-stress and re-stress that that penalty part, we're not inclined, we, we don't like that part, but we can't get rid of it. So um, that's the overview. Um, I thought we'd look at the resolution itself. I don't know, Jaybird, do you have in front of you? Do, did that show up in what you? Okay. Um, as our quasi-official reader, do you feel like just reading that?
Oh, sure.
And we'll make a motion and we'll open up for discussion.
This is a resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty. Whereas the village board of trustees of the village of Red Hook recognizes that the current COVID-19 pandemic is creating significant financial hardship for the residential and commercial property owners of the village of Red Hook and whereas the board of trustees has the power pursuant to real property tax law section fourteen thirty-four to provide for the payment of village taxes in installments, but with limitations beyond our control. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees hereby resolve to set the collection of village taxes as follows. A, on and after the adoption of this resolution, the village real property taxes may be paid in two installments of approximately equal amounts. B, the taxpayer is not obligated to pay by installment and may pay the entire tax bill in whole by July one without penalty or interest. C, if any installment is not paid on or before the date it is due, additional interest shall be added as provided by section fourteen thirty-two and nine twenty-four A of the real property tax law for each month or part thereof until paid. No such installment may be paid unless all prior installments, including interest, shall have been paid or shall be paid at the same time. D, paying by installment, the first installment shall be due and payable to the village treasurer no later than July one with no interest. Failure or neglect by an owner of real property to pay the first installment on time as herein provided shall be construed as an election to pay the entire, I'm sorry, the total amount of taxes in one payment in the manner provided by law and shall therefore thereby qualify, disqualify the taxpayer from the installment payment option. Such failure and neglect to pay timely will result in the standard interest, penalties and other charges as set forth in the that'd be real property tax law. It says reap property tax law. E, the uh, second installment shall be due and payable to the village treasurer on or before September one. Failure or neglect to make the second installment payment timely will result in the standard interest penalties and other charges set forth in real property tax law. F, taxes which are paid through a real property tax escrow account may not be paid in installments. G, unless renewed, this resolution shall apply only to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one tax year.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes.
What I'd like to do, folks, is move that we uh, get this to a level where we can discuss it some more. There's a few points that I'll bring up for you. Um, so I'd offer that to those board. Adopt the resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty. Is there a second so we can do some discussion?
Second.
That's Mr. Trap. Thank you. Yeah, Dave was reading, like I mentioned, we've had Cindy in loop and Ray in loop and um, Ray was suggesting some suggestions in paragraph E and as well as treasurer. And I ran them by legal and the other municipalities and um, like I said, it's a standardized text. Legal felt that paragraph C, the way they've crafted it to relate, even though it was more readable. Um, raises, um, asserting that we should put another little part, like a couple of words in paragraph E. It, it, council felt, no, we'd be changing and they, they have it crafted the way, the way they want it to read. But Ray did also bring up real property tax law. That was, so that, that's a typo, uh, and like you should know, this resolution came from council. Um, right now with our efforts, a lot of the labor was put in between myself and the village of Rhinebeck Mayor. And then the other, um, another five bangers from other municipalities have agreed to utilize the same wording. So we want to have it all the same because that's what the county approved and that's what legal wrote. Because we have run it by the county, they're supportive. What they will do is if you picture, we're all residents and taxpayers. The county prints our tax forms. What they'll do is they're going to add a sentence or two and then they'll put a box that will make it more, illustrate more people's options. I do think though that we as a board should generate a one paragraph kind of short letter, why are we doing this? What we're trying to do to help the people with it. Um, because it is a little confusing. It's, you know, the, the, unfortunately we'll have to get whacked on the second half. Um, but I want to be clear, like, we're not looking at as a revenue scheme or any reason. I, I still think we should do it, but my perspective is.
And a question, a question about E.
Yeah.
So the, the second installment, if Phil would like to make it, it would only be for those for the half of the year that you would make it, wouldn't be the full.
Right.
Interest penalties.
Yeah, because further up, they said July one is paid with no interest and then so council said they designed it. So yeah, anything after July one has to have that five percent. And if you choose to hold till September one, it'd be a one percent and a one percent for each month. It can be prorated. But I'm thinking most people, I would think that take it, would take the July one and the September one. So, but it could get a little nasty with, but Ray and the staff would have to build a spreadsheet and the county could help. And we're in touch with our software consulting company too, because it's really just a mathematical formula. How many days are you into the period and interestingly, but I really don't know what the, we know 50% plus or minus or escrow. You know, what percent are ready to pay us upfront and what percent are really being pinched and we'll need to use it? You know, it's hard to predict exactly, but I think those that have been saving and could pay would rather interest and penalty part. So it's um, but I think it's a tool we can put out there for folks, but Brent asked questions as I was starting to talk. So the county prints our tax bills. They have the data and they start printing May eighteenth. Um, and then Cindy gets them back, apparently sorts out those that are escrow and mails them in bulk to the various banks and then checks everybody, everybody's bill and then mails them out. So I was thinking if we do this, like I said, I think we should put some descriptive letter on our letterhead, just saying what we're trying to do and the penalty is not in control. And would the governor do it between now and you know, the end of the week? I haven't heard any rumblings. I know today conference of mayors said they're still pushing it because like I said, it's, it's a concept that makes sense across the state, not just here in Red Hook. There we have Brent had some questions. We're in the discussion part of resolution thirteen. Anybody else have thoughts slash question or input?
Yeah, I had, I still have a question. If somebody pays uh, the second installment uh, before the end of July, what is their penalty? Is it five percent plus another one percent?
When I talk.
Month of July or is it just five percent?
Um, when I talked to the county taxation people and the conference of mayors taxation people, um, they indicated that they, there's the five percent, but then the rest is prorated. So it's um, I don't know why anybody would. To me, it seems like you'd take the whole deal. Yeah, I guess I can't predict what people do, but, but um, yeah, but it'd be, there is a prorated piece on the interest, not the five percent. So um, that's the story.
So it's five percent regardless of when, when they pay it afterward up into the first of September. And then it's going to be the one percent per month, which is one percent for July and one percent for August. But there's still the question, if you pay it by the end of July, then it's the five percent plus the one percent. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I mean, there could be a case like that.
Yeah, but you might as well hold it another thirty days for only one percent more. You know, it depends on your needs. But then those that can't pay by September one, our financial people have to roll it to get it down to the county for the normal sequence to get us reimbursed.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Like I said, I think we're trying to stay in sync with what people are going through, help them how we can. But at the same time, it looks like all of us have been working budgets for a while. It, it frontloads enough revenue for us in the first six months. Because we do have some of our big expenses scheduled on purpose in those first six months. And the other part is the county just will not let us go past September one. We're looking for it's July one. Got too close to what they can deal with for their processing of delinquent accounts and so forth. So it'll be a little different. But that's what we got. We have it in front of us. We had discussion. I'd like to move it towards a roll call vote. And then what would happen is next day or so, we send this to the county. I have some contact names. It's people might know Heidi Sealback in county taxation and um, the county executives, one of their assistants has been working on it with us. Um, and uh, I think Rhinebeck meets tomorrow night on it. So our goal is to get it down and set before eighteen May. So they know which way to write our bills. So like I said, the lives, cash flow change and our residents will be helped. Those that need it can utilize it. We wish we could go longer, to be honest with you, but it's, we tried and we can't. You know, it would've been nicer if we could do one even later on. Another complicating factor was school tax comes up and I forget if we talked about it. That comes around September, right, folks? And I've circulated the concept to the school superintendent to see what the school could do if they have any uh, wiggle room for tax payment and installment payments. They said they would, superintendent would bring it to the school board. So it might be worth, if you know any school board members to lobby for it because that's a bigger piece of money for everybody and um, might be good to, people could schedule that out a little bit too. But I, I don't know what they're stuck with as far as the penalties that we can't dance around. We have resolution thirteen moved in second grade. Um, I would do a roll call. Landell votes yes. Uh, Lang, how's your vote, sir?
Yes.
Uh, Kowalcheck?
Yes.
Uh, Norris?
Yes.
And Mr. Trap?
Yes.
Okay, Carrie will do some steps in-house on that. Thank you. Um, we want to, stuff on our, it's like one other proclamation. Brent heads up a lot of our tree and community beautification efforts and he indicates to me that our ongoing Tree City USA status requires him to do a little work. So Brent, do you want to go to work?
Yep. This is one of our requirements for the village of Red Hook to obtain its Tree City USA status. And usually I read the Arbor Day proclamation during our spring planting, which as you know, was canceled this year due to the pandemic. So I'm taking this opportunity, this meeting to read the Arbor Day proclamation of to twenty twenty. Whereas the mayor and board of trustees recognized the last Friday in April, which on this particular month was April twenty-fourth, as Arbor Day in the village of Red Hook, New York. And whereas the village of Red Hook is celebrating its twentieth year as a tree city USA. And whereas the celebration of Arbor Day encourages the planting of trees for the well-being of current and future generations. And whereas the estimated annual benefits. And whereas the estimated annual benefits improved air and water quality, energy savings, CO2 reduction, aesthetic benefits provided by our village trees as determined by our 2009 street tree inventory is over $75,000 per year. Now therefore be resolved by Brent Kowalcheck, Deputy Mayor of the Village of Red Hook and liaison to the Village Green Committee. You hereby proclaim the 24th day of April 2020 as Arbor Day and urge all residents to observe this day by planting trees which are appropriate for this area and by participating in Arbor Day programs. Maybe we can make this up in the fall. But proclaimed.
Broke up a little toward the end, Brent, but so you're done reading, so your proclamation is in the form of a resolution?
No, just a proclamation.
So you don't need any numbers or anything?
Okay. Yep.
So you reading it, is that all required from us?
That's all it is.
Okay, so that's what you read when we're normally standing with our shovels and getting ready to work.
Rakes, yep, that's it.
Could I just an additional whereas for this year, which would be whereas Central Hudson crews recently cut down some of the nicest street trees we have in the Village of Reddick, which seems a little unfortunate given our 20 year history of being Tree City USA.
Yep. And we try. Yeah, but what we try trying to do is realizing their their efforts is trying to put more appropriate scaled trees under wire under wire, so we don't have the opportunity to chop. So we're learning as well, went through that, but they've they've been fishes on their pruning.
They have, it seems particularly this year and right around my neighborhood and up Linden Ave and some, you know, a couple of really nice big old Linden trees on Linden Ave, just gone bye-byes. And that's really sad.
Yep.
But we should. I I walk fairly often, whereabouts on Linden up the?
Right alongside the middle school, they cut down a large basswood, a large Linden tree. And then on maize land, they cut down a massive oak. I mean, you know, I know the logic behind it. I mean, it's all about, you know, attorneys and, you know, the the possibility of a tree coming down on a line. But the the annoying thing about the the basswood they cut on Linden was that it was in front of, I don't know, 60 very tall spruce trees. And those spruce trees, any one of them is going to take down those lines and was going to take down those lines before that gorgeous basswood. So where's the logic in that?
Did you restate the last part, they would have taken them before? I didn't follow what you said there.
Though, well, I mean, I'm very glad they did not cut down all the big spruce trees along Linden in front of the middle school. But I'm just saying that as far as safety of your wires go, those things are going to take down the wires before the basswood was.
Am I catching that last word before the what?
The Basswood, Linden, a big Linden tree.
Okay. Let's, yeah, I'm shocked because usually Central Hudson a good working relationship with them.
They they have their their rules, you have to cut everything within so many feet of the wires. They put in new poles, new wires. Being super safety conscious and just cutting everything.
Yeah, it's usually a 10 foot radius around the top line, which is the logical thing. So you'll see what I call alphabet trees, they'll do Cs and Vs and As and so that's Rhinebeck.
They can't do that, they'll take down the whole tree and it's just, I mean, and obviously the work's contracted out and, you know, they have their orders and they go do their thing. And it's just, it doesn't always bear up to a logical assessment of where the risk is. That's my venting for today.
Thank you.
Yeah, we knew they were trimming, but I didn't know they were taking them right down, geez. Anyway, maybe we could kick back for a moment. The third order on the agenda. Those review website, worker situations, staff transitions, planning zoning board meetings. If we could brainstorm in the sense for a moment here of taking a little time and using some creative juices. But we have a situation where Cindy will be retiring in six weeks now and we're using media sharing platforms as best we can with Ray doing training. It's a little bit unique in that you can't train in the normal sense of the word. Seems like it's working out, but we, like I said, we're under these guidelines to reduce in-house staff and keep people healthy. So it's just what we have to do. We've been utilizing our website, Larissa does that, like posting our meetings and different things she can work at remotely. You might just to put in your brains, remember that Municity is a web based software program where Lara and Larissa can access that even without having to share with splash top software linkages. So that's a good thing. But where I'm headed is we did our budget in the pre-COVID era and we still cannot totally predict where we're going to be with government orders as far as staffing and health and safety issues within our building. And where we're going to be as far as revenue coming into the next fiscal year. I don't think we'll see a sharp hit for several months, but I'd like to do a discussion here and give you an idea that I've come up with and it's essentially mimicking what we're doing now. We have Cindy coming in alone, 8:15 about 11:15 does a handoff to Greg, who's a part timer. He covers with a lock building and access controls, any phone calls, any public interactions. But really, we're not letting anybody in. Court's coming back in another fashion, but they're separately run and they'll have their own guidance from Office Court Administration. I'm inclined, board members, to go with the plan. As you know, we've been trying to move away from full time to part time folks with some transitions and redesign work. I'd like to give Ray the option of having Cindy as a consultant after she leaves, something like the Michelle Zagirsky, where it wouldn't be an employee, it wouldn't be every day of the week, but if Ray needed or had a question, he could reach out and Cindy would log and keep track of hours and pay her probably on a monthly or biweekly, you know, something that made sense. I know Michelle now bills us once a month. But what I'm looking at is I think we're going to have a need to really watch our expenses starting immediately. But especially with uh, after July one, we're not looking to hire new people. In my opinion, it's almost become impossible to hire and train hire and train new people. It's, I'm thinking if we've made our business or our government accessible to the public from 11 to four, but have our professional staff, the treasurer and the clerk, the new clerk working say the morning hours, but not handling customer traffic, they'd be handling the higher end components of what they do. And each of have unique skill faults and unique job duties. There'll be, we're talking about as Ray and Lara, I'm thinking, you know, if Ray came in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but left, so we don't have a lot of physical body overlap with Greg who's coming in, who would then run the day to day nitty gritty transactions. And Lara would be here downstairs Tuesday and Thursday by herself doing the higher level clerk things. With Cindy doing both jobs, it was always she could transition from one to the other, back and forth, work with the public. But I think we're learning, I think the world is changing through a remote existence on many, many levels. And I think for us to protect our budget and maintain service, we could do that. So I'd like to put that into play. Essentially, we're doing it now in a version of it. But when Cindy leaves and then Ray comes in more physically in the building, we would, I'd like to get that as an agreeable solution. I'm not saying to be forever, one doesn't know if it's going to answer it or be. You know, will certain restriction be relaxed? I just don't see that seen by January, but we have to protect our people, serve our customers, serve our residents. I think it could work, I think we're seeing the strength of remote access. We have Municity, we see, we're working with our public and communicating with them to get them to understand, hey, you don't need to come in and physically be here, we can do a lot of these things for you without you being here. So I think the big thing is it helps, I think, fiscally, it helps health wise to all our people, including our public. And we can still provide the services, so I'd like to kick that, it's, I think it's worth doing. And I think we're small enough and flexible enough, we could try it. And um, you know, we have to start communicating it soon, you know. But in my opinion, effectively, that's what we're doing now. It's uh, people in the early COVID stages, meaning that they might not all realize it. But I think we'll just say we can provide the service and we will. It would not affect highway at this point or police in any sense, but I think part of it, to be honest, we were moving toward having police to have some more in-house admin assistance. I don't really see that being too feasible in the health world and in the fiscal world of ours. Larissa, like, you know, we were schooling her to get credentials to be a building inspector. In the early stages, she could be work under the tutelage of our building inspectors and do fire inspections if she had to. I think it could work and it could be a win win for us financially, service wise. So I throw it out. And it's a little impromptu, but I talked a little bit with some one on ones with folks and including Ray, including Cindy. And um, it's just, is it limit the old open building, you know, walk in and talk and visit for a while, it's going to be do transactions as much as we can remotely, as much as our public can and keep things going. Any thoughts slash input or opposition, contradiction or support or, but I think it's gonna be.
How would you see this saving as far as the the budget goes as far as realizing a less costly means of operating the government?
Well, I think ideally, we're looking at when Ari left for two 20 hour people. For our own fiscal, financial reasons. And I think right now we're looking to tailor Larissa into support to the building department more. And then so we really don't have. I can stretch Greg, I think in pandemic civil service world to 25 hours. I can't bring in a 20, another 20 hour person right now. And where would we train them? I think we'd be, we'd be working with the amount of people we have with a redesign and planning and zoning that we have essentially budgeted, you know, with using the reset up there and taking Clark and working with, you know, moving off D3. The reset becomes more important in that planning zoning world than sitting downstairs. We have in the background, somebody, I'll say the first name, Doris, has remote access capability. If somebody gets sick or goes has some other issues internally, she could help a little bit with some water processing and Cindy and I were talking, I don't know how fresh Doris is on tax processing, but.
So this would basically save us as far as salaries go of.
Yeah.
Are we still paying, I mean, does it take away from any of the you know, someone wanted to come in for a building permit, but Lara would still be here, right? In the morning, if the contractor wanted to come in at nine o'clock to get a permit or make it up.
You don't need contractors to come in.
Yeah.
Do it all online now?
Yes.
As much as possible.
I I do it all online or either it gets mailed in in my uh, in my job in the other world here. It either comes in online, I print it out, I remote in, I print it out, or it gets mailed into the town hall and I go pick it up once a week.
And that would be same with zoning and planning applications?
That I process all of those and I do the same thing with those.
All right. People wanted to use the police or contact the police, they could still ring the buzzer.
Yeah, it brings up a separate problem, which I mean, we're in public format and it's public information, you know, we contracted town of Red Hook. The town of Reddick is projecting their budget next year, their little head of game, meaning the supervisors starting to look at sales tax possible, you know, what could be a negative impact sales tax? I think I circulated something to us, we have a floor of 85,000 against a budget of 107 right now. It's not a monstrous impact, but it's significant for us. The town has a four times larger sales tax component because they have that many more people than us. It's the per capita kind of reimbursement that kind of gives. So they're looking at big, big shortfalls. I think we have to work together with the town to be somewhat cohesive. But where I was headed is on if we were originally pushing the town to do more contribution toward our police protection and our contract that we deal with them. I'm not sure that that is feasible right now, we've not been told no, but Brent's question, part of our police department growth has been centered on that we're doing more and more town work. And a lot of our walk-ins are town people, with their own personal issues, whatever they might be. We just cannot afford staff and do those things. I think we have to move back more toward a dispatched agency, meaning 911 dispatched. And, you know, we can't, right now, the world has changed and as much as we want to push the town for more contribution.
So you're saying it's going to be incumbent upon our police officers when the town person comes in, they're going to have to say, well, I'm sorry, you're going to have to actually call the sheriff's department on this because we're not handling these things, right?
Because right now we have the door locked. We continue to have the door locked. And somehow in Jay's vein, there was, and then somebody's coming in with a bounce check from the town. You know, it's, we've been doing some of those things, but if we're not on a shift and we're not getting reimbursed, I don't see how we can you know, we can't have an open shop for so many reasons, there's the financial on the walk-in. Then there's the health reason, we just don't, we can't have a lot of physical entry into our building where buildings up, the police are upstairs, you have to go through the lobby, up the hall, down the hall, past other employees and wait for admission to the police department. Most of you redesigned the building, but that's not in the budget, we're not going to do that right now. So but Brent's question, it's good and it's thought provoking, but I think that's the answer. We we have to rein in what we can deal with and what we will deal with and.
Same for the Tivaleys that we deal with, I mean, it's only three or four that we deal with on a monthly basis. But you know, you have to think of the, some of them are simple and some of them, you know, require follow up time for our officers.
Yeah, I was thinking more of the walk-ins, I think some of those Tivaleys. Just trying to see if, I forget if I got the printout attached, no, we didn't, right, we didn't, yeah. But yeah, I think we're talking about the walk-ups and walk-ins. Because they are, you know, right now we're limited, we're seeing a lot of fingerprints, those are minimal, you know, they're not huge numbers, but we're gonna have to. I just don't see the prior to this depression was town, give more money, yeah, and let's merge, let's make more of a shared police department. And right now, between those three threats, three threats, fiscal, health and staffing. I think we have to back off a little bit, so the 11 to four, I don't think we're going to have an open building for the foreseeable future, Brent, it's going to be controlled access. And you got to deal with us remotely. And if it's not a village thing, push them off, you know, to complain off, complainant off to state police or or sheriff. But I'd like to put that in, I don't think we need a resolution or I just want to get a consensus as again, if we do that. Cindy's last day is June 30th, Tuesday. If that makes sense. I think she said she can't. If that makes sense, I think she said she can't work and get paid for the thirty, something with her retirement world. So probably that we, last week of June, we kicked that in. Anybody have any contradictory thoughts or? Even highway, we'd still keep the same staff, but um, I guess the big thing is what is the threat? What is, uh, when will the physical health threat diminish? And what's the threat to our budget trending in presuppositions pre-COVID? I think it's a way for us to couch hedge a little bit, but still keeping the services.
You see this as being permanent or temporary once we're past this pandemic?
Yeah, I don't know. I thought about that. It's definitely necessary as we're in the pandemic mode. And then, yeah, if we saw some huge surge in financial activity, maybe it wouldn't have to stay in force, but I just think we're gonna be looking at costs and expenses that we can't even imagine. You know, if somebody gets sick or something happens, man, we're gonna be, because that one building cleaning, you know, and unfortunately, we've been flexible enough, like when our two highway guys were exposed, we were able to fashion a way to collect garbage, you know, but it's because our guys were flexible and were small enough. But I'm afraid something's gonna come up that we just can't quite imagine. And we, yeah, some fun balance, but I don't really wanna be pulling down fun balance to, to get through normal staffing when maybe we can live with variation of normal and uh, go there. And we'll see, because you know, new people come in with tasks, we'll have to see how it all shakes out. And if there's step-saving, cost-saving or more time or, or what, you know, yes. I think one of our strengths is we are flexible and we see things happen, see things happening as they're developing. To me, this is one of them, if we can live with this remote. And uh, and we give the two professional level, you know, clerk and treasurer, they would just do their tasks, whatever. They're working on pension or budget or whatever, you know, filing and intense law filing with companies, taking whatever. They would do that in their quiet time. They wouldn't be expected to get up and sell the garbage tags or whatever. And the change with staffing gives us an opportunity to rethink it, open up, think outside the box, redesign. Things we've been doing in other departments as we've made changes. I think this is part of it. It brings up a related thing, can't go into this without executive session, but the police contract comes up here at the end of May. We've had some talks with the union, but um, I don't see anything finalizing um, between now and May, uh, the end of May. But um, it does, we have made similar statements to the union folks saying, hey, look, you know, we don't know what the new world is really gonna be, but right now it doesn't look too good for the old models. Work with us, so that'll be our, our operating motif. But right now, as far as website, remote workers, I, I think we're fortunate, we have a pretty strong website. Remote workers we have in place, um, staff transition we talked about, then planning board, zoning board meetings. We still have to continue that and we have to have them trained with Chris and Lara. And we had PB and ZBA all in the same meeting. It was properly announced and noticed to the public, but it was just a uh, training meeting. There was no content, no actual cases were discussed. It's good like this, it's good that we had a shakedown crew, so to speak, and everybody got on and got the hang of it. The ZBA folks, they did ask for another training of their own. They were thinking, and we will notice it, Chris gave some links, but um, they were talking about um, they might wanna run like a mock case just to go through the process of motions and different things that they would wanna feel more comfortable with. Because as you know, George Beekman resigned as chair, co-chair will be working the meetings. And he seems confident and willing and able to do it, but just felt he might want one more practice try run with the media and something. So we gave him that and um, we'll circulate that. So we're, um, that's kind of the news for me. So if we do, seems like I'm not hearing any, I'm hearing good questions, but nobody's saying, no, don't do it. So uh, it sounds like, I don't know there's any obligation that we have to have access to public from nine to eleven. And once we get everybody aware and communicated out, and I think kind of fits with everything we're trying to, you know, survive and save some money and provide the services and just push, the world's going remote, world's going virtual. We're gonna go with it, hopefully lead the way a little bit. Anyway, that was that point. Old transactional things, flushing system, notice, the infamous water system that we keep trying to get flushed. Working with VRI and Fernando, how are we guys trying to get something done here in the near future? We'll have to have the clerk maybe draft, I shouldn't say maybe, but draft. I think we have a notice that we put on our door on our website. I think I've seen one in the past. If Cindy could draw that up tomorrow, we won't put it out yet, folks, but in the probably next two weeks, we'll have to get it out. And you all should be aware that complaints about water pressure drops or something, but it's the standard wording. We are also circulating our annual water quality report. There's one point I thought I'd bring up. You might recall the state DOH did that random sampling of a few municipalities across the state and we came back with a two-point-oh-five and a five-point-one-one read on um, PFOA, PFOS. The max contamination limit is seventy parts per trillion. We're at two and five. And uh, the new annual water quality report has that, but we're analyzing it further. It looks like technically our finished water goes out with non-detectable. But two of seven raw water samples came back with those, two different samples came back with those twos and fives. So we're trying to analyze that further, just what that's about. Remember last year, we put a weagram for carbon filtration, but quite frankly, some engineers and even DOH are telling me, do you really want to go there? We wanna get rid of any contamination, but you're thinking that carbon filtration might create more headaches than it's worth at this point in time. But so the AWQRs down at DOH being reviewed um, with those numbers. But the rest of the numbers all look fine to me, nothing out of the ordinary with the rest of the report.
As someone at DOH said, carbon filtration's not a good idea?
Yeah, yeah. Talking to Ron Miller and um, it was um, I mean, the cost and then the recycling of the medium and disposing of the medium apparently is problematic financially and just physically dealing with it.
It does, it does cost a lot of money and there's regular maintenance and replacement of the activated carbon. It's, it's not insignificant. And if you're not, you know, if you don't need to bring it down to, you know, absolute zero.
We're at two and five, I think it was two-point-oh-five and five-point-one-one. I remember this number stuck in my head. I mean, they're not great, but they're nowhere near seventy. And then, you know, we, we found out about it, we had no known contamination. It was helped by engineers to be environmental in the broadest, broadest sense, you know, nothing local to us. But we are, what I noticed when I was rereading some things the other day, the finished water came back non-detect. So um, you know, we'll look at, you know, they do what they call, I think they call it test blanks. Is Charlie, you know, something like that? It's like, they carry vials in their car and to the well site or to the pump station. And um, you know, it's supposed to be a blind study and make sure no other contaminants hit, but low numbers, it's, I think we're gonna, we'll look at it again. I like, I wanna retest our finished water again. I'd like to keep monitoring it, but it's nowhere near. Because we have heard the state was gonna bring it down to ten parts per trillion. Charlie heard anything? Has that come through? I haven't heard that it passed, but uh.
I'm, I'm not sure that I would hear, but uh, I, I haven't heard anything and, you know, I mean, all the state agencies are, you know, basically in sort of stasis.
Yeah. Um, hey Brent, one thing, another item on our line is sewer. I was talking today, EFC Dwight, is it Dwight Brown? We have phase two sewer on our IUP and uh, I told them we're still trying to nail down phase one. So maybe Friday, he's gonna send me some info. I said we're interested in the phase two someday, but right now the goal is to get a phase one built in the ground and uh.
But phase two isn't on the annual list?
Yes, right.
So we can keep it on there for a while and, you know, when we get serious about it and get the revenue up, then we can do it.
Yeah.
You know.
He said forward something where our engine will start to fill it out, but we have a link where we have to type in something from our computers. I thought we'd work on that Friday. But um, to recap some of what Brent was saying, we're really close. We got the speedies we talked about. We're getting a little back and forth with two of the three holdouts. We thought they were done and they're, they're not signing it. Keep you posted on that, but um, it's been a crazy, crazy time in that world. Online payment update, we're working, trying to get that live by June one. I think that'd be sweet, especially if uh, we're gonna be doing the water billing, mailing in June and tax bill. I don't know if it's the best time or not to troubleshoot, but it's gonna fall right into our online high-tech payment systems. The last thing I had was, I mean, you had a New York State County Town Village economic, economic recovery. I had put dash local EDC and working group idea. Um, I think I circulated today the phase one through four and reentry and so forth. It's pretty important because we need to get our street back alive, but unfortunately restaurants and retailer are two main things. And they don't come in force until phase three, which needs metrics to be hit for two weeks of phase one and two. So at least a month out, presuming the metrics stay hit. And metrics being hospitalization rates, bed availability is about seven tests that the state is requiring regions to do. And for the board and for the public, we're in the Mid-Hudson region. There's some debate, does that include Westchester and Putnam? Or is it just Orange and uh, let's see, Orange, Rockland, Ulster, Duchess and uh.
Westchester.
So yeah, nobody's numbers are horrendous. The state is flattening the curve, but they're still requiring these metrics to be met. The conference call today was the county presuming those metrics could be met middle of next week. Some of them are day and rolling averages of bed availability and factors. So I circulated something today, um, just so everybody's knowledgeable and can talk to their public if you get pushed back or anything. Essentially, we still will be following what comes from the state down to the regions. And then our region, you have various county execs are keeping track of the metrics. It's, it's beyond our level and our pay grade and our ability to track these things, so we're relying on them. But what I wanted to look, where I circulated something, all of you, what the county asked for was, in particular with the restaurant trade, it's gonna happen with other areas of business, but you all got something from me that we sent to the county for like creative ideas to help get restaurants back in business. And um, part of it was could we form cooperative or joint seating, feeding areas where restaurants will not be able to get the same amount of bodies into their shops for the foreseeable future? And like we all know, bodies and rotation of customers are what makes a restaurant profitable. So if you can't get them in, even if you reopen, you're not gonna make enough money to survive. So um, we're looking at some ideas and I floated it to some of the business community and uh, to his credit, Todd Barrett, he already went, like a Google map and he's drawn in some things and a few of us were talking about it, you know, this was thinking of in the warm weather months. Can we have something like we had the pre-hard scramble party in a tent with lights and cleanable tables and washing stations? The downside is we can't, we cannot pay for it to levels. It's, we can't really gift private enterprise install money and B, we don't have the money. But it's uh, you know, so we would rely on components of the private sector and wherever we could get um, cooking up that. But to me, restaurants, from what I can see, it'll be at least thirty days before they can think of actually reopening in some limited fashion. But um, so we have a little time, so that's underway. And if anybody else had any ideas, but we have to still be governed by the phases that come out of the state and the metrics. Looks like we've hit the things on my part. We put a blanket executive session, but I don't see need to do that right now. I think we'll forego, folks, the um, workshop. It turns out it's the same, I think, this week as the planning board meeting. To, I think they're. Yeah, I think that's their night. Um, we'll let them use Ring Central and we've hit what we need to hit. Any general business from the board?
Let's see, Ed, I did have um, post the Duchess County Planning Federation's uh, April twentieth meeting on conducting meetings during the COVID nineteen. If you go to the Duchess County Planning Federation website, you can get either the um, either the PowerPoint presentation or you can get a YouTube recording of everything that went down. So you can get all of the information, so it's available.
Looks like it was helpful because, but we had when I was doing whole board notices and ZBA, she used the one we templated, but looked like she used some input from the other one too. And the board seemed somewhat familiar with it. It's whoever attended, rather.
We, we had two hundred-plus people attend that, which was, I was very impressed.
All right. Um, as is our custom, we have a comment, public comment section. If somebody's out there and they wanted to identify themselves and ask a question, or if they have no question, just say, hi, we have no question. We're not sure who's out there. I guess I could look at participants somewhere here.
The, is it David Pearson? I just saw him.
What's that?
I think he's trying to get on.
You froze.
Unmuted, good.
Hey, what's up? Could you say your name, sir?
David Pearson, village resident.
All right, what's up, David?
I always have some concerns going on. They're not as big as yours, but uh. Oh, first of all, since you mentioned PFOA and PFOSS, um, I would think you're, you're finished. I, nobody wants to drink that, that poison, but uh, I would think you're probably diluting it with your fourteen or fifteen wells for the two that came back positive. So you're believing, you're diluting it below the detection limit through all the, you know, for the, the, the entry point water. I think that's what's going on.
Yeah, that's one thing we're gonna explore is, it's our presumption that the raw water tests, we're taking that to the pump house too, just different samples, but um, we'll, we're looking at that.
So we're either, were either those wells near the firehouse?
One is, and when it first came out two years ago, I think we got the report February of twenty eighteen, is our call. They assert that they don't use foam, do not have foam trucks, do not have any.
They do have foam trucks.
I was told they don't.
They do. The newest truck they got, the newest engine they got is a foam truck. And uh, a few years ago, they tried it out and they filled their parking lot near well four, I think it is, with foam. And uh, it was hard to get rid of the foam. This, they sprayed it with regular water and it wouldn't go away. And who knows if it had PFOA and PFOSS in it? I don't know. I told them about it at the time. No, they definitely have a foam truck.
It's one of the first things I did when I heard about it is, you know, you know, you hear of Stewart Airport, like airport fighting foam. And they denied any, we'll have to pursue that.
Yeah. Uh, so anyway, you finally found a way to get George Beekman to stop attending your meetings.
No, no, we'd love. He was great, man. He was our back bencher, we called him. He was, he's probably out there somewhere, more high-tech than we know.
So anyway, my, my, my concerns are um, I want you to keep these things in mind. Uh, there's no crosswalks on the north. I want you to keep these things in mind, there's no crosswalks on the north side of Broadway. I'd like to see a crosswalk someday at CVS. To connect the parking of the, the loop of the sidewalk around the village with getting across Route nine at CVS.
Go ahead, Brad.
Brad being quiet, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No, go ahead, I'm listening to David here.
What's that?
I say I'm listening to.
I'm suggesting we put a crosswalk at CVS across Route nine. To connect the, the loop around the village with getting across Route nine on the north side of Route nine.
Something we can look into, I think, with the, with the DOT, is that where we going through their right of ways?
Right, right.
We would probably have to look at grants, because those curb cuts, the handicap curb cuts and signaling devices are. We're still waiting on four of them that we. That's under the FAST program that hasn't been.
Looking for the north side of the village to have some equity with the south side of the village with respect to crosswalks.
Yeah.
Uh, next item is, I've been asked before, police presence on Park Avenue due to speeding. You know, they, they, of all things, they reduced the speed limit on, on River Road down to thirty miles an hour. And that's a county road. And here we have a village road that's thirty mile an hour also, I know I've been asked to see if we can reduce the twenty five and this, and that was no, can't do it. Just like to have a police presence on some of our park avenue to catch some of these speeders.
You did buy that radar trailer?
Yeah, it was there for one or day, one or, one or two days and then it disappeared, it'd be nice to bring it back.
Yeah, I think that's.
Right at my front lawn.
Yeah, because I'll lean on the cops trailer, I think what I've noticed is with less traffic, I think what is moving, moving faster.
Third item, just, just two items, two items left, as a village member, I, I want to reiterate that I'd like to see the DPW guys. Stop pruning within the parks, they, they, they don't seem to know how to do it properly. And I've seen it in both parks, both Memorial Park and Abrams Park, you know, over the past year and a half. And I'd prefer to see them stop doing that, they can, they can prune as much as they want on the sides of the village roads, but not, not inside the parks.
That's your opinion, but we, we'll, we'll work with them, I think. What, did they do one thing that bothers you most or?
Yeah, it's pretty upsetting to me, they, they don't know how to prune and they have plenty of other work they can do. We've already talked about this, they have plenty of other work they can do besides pruning, they should keep their hands off of saws. And the last item is, the last item is, as a planning board member, we have been in, we've been following the code of. No internally lit signs. And of course, what's popped up is internally lit signs throughout the village, open signs, some, some were egregious than others. And it'd be nice to decide what to do with that issue. Because, for example, we stopped Stewarts from having an internally lit sign, we got after him and said, you can't have a lit sign. And now around the village, lit signs are showing up, open signs are showing up.
It's, it's internally debated with us on the board level, it's on our work list. My gut feeling is, I know it's come up, it came up pre holiday season and we feel that there was a list developed, but we have no. No proof that it's consolidated and accurate, so we're not gonna go enforcing against certain people without, against everybody. And the problem is right even before the COVID nineteen, our street is fragile. We do not want to be issuing violations and now, to be quite frank, I'm concerned what businesses. Are gonna survive COVID, I mean, it's, I'll be frank with you, it's like. It's bad, I don't think it hooves us to be pushing and banging on that right now.
I, I agree, my, my concern first came up before COVID showed up.
Yeah, if it's life safety, even now in our planning and building department. We'll act on a safety and immediate, immediate permits and so forth, but. What's your thoughts on your advice, Dave?
The zoning review committee is, is reviewing signs right now, or when we. Before the, the pandemic, we were reviewing sites and included both coordinated, open signs and alternatives for that, so. Still a pointed discussion, but we did hear you and we did look at the list and. The contentious and difficult, we're trying to do right now, so.
Thank you, okay, all right, anybody else on the board or public? It's like we could start thinking about wrapping up vouchers.
Steve's our chapter president. I'd just like to thank George Beekman, he served twenty four years on the zoning board, fourteen of the. Of them as the head. And just like to thank him for his service for the village.
I would concur, we are developing a little proclamation for him. We're hoping he'd be on one of our meetings, but I guess we might have to, maybe that's not gonna happen. But we do miss him at our meetings and he was an excellent ZBA chair. You know, he replaced, I guess, Brent, who came off ZBA, what, thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago? And that's when George moved up and to every piece of information I can get, he ran great meetings and got the work done and prepped up for it. So we do thank him, if you want to convey that, but we do have a plan to get him a little some, something before the fiscal year. Appointment year runs out here, but thanks, Steve.
Okay, I had one other thing, Chris. Can you, is there any way you can turn on. For the median meetings, virtual background?
For a background, I'm not sure if you can do that in Ring Central, I know in Zoom you.
Yes, you can.
You can in this one?
You have, you have to do, you have to do it system wide or for the meeting.
For a background, I'll look into that.
Yeah, you go into audio or, yeah, audios. Audio studying, go into video. And it's there, but you have, you see it, nobody else does.
Got it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
What do you put behind me? I need.
Whatever you please like.
I need like makeup and hairdresser, what if a green room attention?
It looks funny sometimes too.
Yes, it does.
Thanks, Steve, so, all right, I was starting to say before, vouchers were downstairs, I know. Some people were coming in today, I haven't heard.
I did it.
You did, so we have three on there, I think Jen was thinking of coming in tomorrow, she could work that out. I'm in full PPE, she said. But move that we pay bills after audit as we are required, is there a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Trap.
Yes.
And roll, I think I'll do it without roll call, anybody opposed to paying the bills, please so indicate. All in favor? So I hear all eyes. I think it took longer than we thought, but we got through it all. If nobody has anything else, we turn over to Mr. Deputy Mayor, you want to wrap this up?
I certainly would, I'd like to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Okay, like I said, as an amendment to that, we will not have the workshop in two days. If we need a special meeting or some, for some reason, we can announce that. But be safe, everybody, and I'll second Brent's motion all in favor. All right, sounds like unanimous and. Anything else we need to do here, I think we just leave meeting and thanks, everybody, and be safe.